Welcome to order. Madam Clerk, will call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augusti, Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedano, Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Maza, President Pro Tem Gonzalez.
Here. This is a regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2014, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2013, and sent to the Star-Ledger and Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. Before we even go to public session, I just first like to thank and congratulate all the winners from outside of the Ward Council races. Everyone worked very hard, I know, to get elected, and that showed in the results last night that people spoke very clearly, that, you know, they appreciate and they know what they have and they want to continue with what they have. So congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody.
Any member of the public, taxpayer, resident, wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Seeing no one here, close that person of the meeting.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Before we begin with reviewing the agenda recommendations, may I have the floor?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I too want to congratulate all the candidates who were successful yesterday, from the first ward to the sixth ward. I congratulate all the Democratic winners yesterday's election, and I recognize all the efforts, all the time and work that they put into it. Mr. President, I believe, I strongly believe that moving forward, and I'm speaking for myself, but moving forward, I think, is important for members of City Council and for those of us who elected, we, public servants, to make a sincere effort to work with everyone in the community regardless of their political views or affiliation. I always felt that way, and I just wanted to emphasize this evening that that's how I feel. I feel strongly. And we cannot say, we cannot talk about reaching across the aisle because we're all pretty much Democrats, but what I mean is reaching across and be able to talk to people who may have different views. However, Mr. President, there was at least one situation, you know, this campaign, that really, really bothered me and offended me, and I want to do something about it. And as a resident, taxpayer, and a councilman who resides in the third ward, I was very upset with the fact that a candidate ran for office when, in fact, he was not qualified to run for office in the third ward because clearly he does not live there. It is a well-known fact by now that myself and other individuals contested from the beginning the fact that Mr. De Silva wanted to run for office in the third ward. Unfortunately, he was allowed to. However, subsequent to that decision, a lot more evidence has been collected and established, and it's really a shame that he ran for office. I would like to request from Yolanda, a City Clerk, to write a letter to, I believe his name is Ray Martinez, I'd like to double-check that, the head of the DMV, because it seems to me that someone who is ahead of a motor vehicle, I believe in North, I'm not sure, somebody's ahead of the motor vehicle, one of his responsibilities is to make sure that people reside in the place they say they do when they apply for registrations, for licenses, et cetera. And I myself have at least three ways to prove that Mr. De Silva does not reside where he claims he resides. Mr. Silva lives the hard place, he has lived there at least for the past six months, and therefore, he never met the requirement to run. But this letter, of course, can I get into that? My point with this letter is that I would like the Director, it has a title, to look into these allegations that I'm making, to investigate the matter, because he should definitely be held to a higher standard. He's in charge of motor vehicles, responsible for making sure that information is accurate, and here we have this person lying, at least three times, that I can prove, in certifications that he's signed, lying to the court and lying to the people of the third ward, and that's not acceptable. He should be held to a higher standard than that, and I would ask for the Division of Motor Vehicles to look into it. As a matter of fact, Mr. President, and I don't want this included in the letter, but as a matter of fact, it was brought to my attention early this morning, that early today, the day after the election, Mr. De Silva was given a traffic violation, he was given a ticket. He was parked illegally in a cleaning zone. Where? The hard place. The hard place, the place where he claims his dog lives, but not him. It's really, I think that's a slap in the face to every citizen, to every taxpayer, and I do this not only as a councilman, I live in the third ward, and I find offensive what he has done. But for the purpose of this letter, obviously, my main concern is that Motor Vehicles investigate the fact that this man has lied. I wonder what address he's using with his employer, with the government. That's something they should look into. And if they find, like I have found, and they can prove like I have proven, that he, in fact, has lied, then he should pay the consequences, whatever they may be. I don't know what the rules are of the motor vehicle, but he should not be allowed to get away through this without any punishment, i.e., at the very least, I think the Division of Motor Vehicles should be made aware of this, and I would like a copy of this letter to be sent to the governor, since the governor appointed Mr. De Silva. And I thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Questa. I don't think anybody would disagree with the point that you're making with regard to his residency. It is, has been in question.
Yes.
I agree with you. I mean, in the second ward, being from the second ward and living not far from the hard place, I've had also, myself, had neighbors indicate that he comes in and out of there irregularly.
Yes.
So, for the last few months, so I think it's a good letter that will be sent to the motor vehicle, and Yolanda will draft that letter.
Yeah, and I offer, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Yolanda, I offered my time, Yolanda, the yellow department, I have essentially a lot of information, but I'm not going to get into all the details here, but if they need some more input from me, please reach out to me and I'll be happy to sit with you, both of them, either one of them, whoever, whoever needs my help.
Very appropriate. Yes, Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, Mr. De Silva used to live on Wyoming Avenue with his wife, I don't know what happened, but within a day of his leaving his former residence on Wyoming Avenue, I was getting phone calls from people saying that he had moved out, and we know conversely from people who live on Halsted Road that he doesn't live there. So, not only, there is the whole illegality of it.
Sure.
But it's also a slap in the face of residents and voters to say, even though I don't live in your ward, I'm telling you I do, and don't listen to anybody else. So, that's an affront to me personally as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, great. Let's move on to the business.
Letter dated May 29, 2014, from Business Administrator, requesting that your honorable body consider a resolution supporting the international residential code requirements for fire sprinklers in one and two-family dwellings and townhouses.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 30, 2014, from Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a policy of insurance with Western Charity Bond Company of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, through Hughes Plumber Associates, covering municipal court judges and the entire municipal court personnel, for the term of September 1, 2014, to September 1, 2015, at annual premium of $1,565.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 30, 2014, from Business Administrator, requesting that your honorable body consider a resolution acknowledging receipt of the preliminary study map designating certain portions of the Morris Avenue corridor as an area in need of redevelopment, listing properties that may potentially be acquired by condemnation, requiring proper notice to the respective property owners, placing a full-size color map on file in the Office of the City Clerk and Office of Planning and Community Development, and authorizing the planning board to complete the preliminary study and conduct hearings as set forth in NJSA 4812-1 and 6.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 2, 2014, from Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Ben Schaefer and Associates, Lake of Paccon, New Jersey, for the purchase of playground and park equipment for the Recreation and Public Works Departments, for the period May 27, 2014, through May 14, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 2, 2014, from Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to David Weber Oil Company, Carlstadt, New Jersey, for automotive lubricants, foils, grease, and hydraulic oils for various departments, for the period May 27, 2014, through May 29, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Independence Constructors, Bridgewater, New Jersey, for cleaning, inspections, monitoring of oil-water separators above and underground tanks at various locations, and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection compliance, for the period May 31, 2014, through June 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to SHI International, Somerset, New Jersey, for the renewal of the reverse 911 system for the police department, for the period May 16, 2014, through May 15, 2015, at a total cost of $36,000.
Any comments?
Yeah, what if that reverse 911? That is a system where, when there's a community emergency, centrally located telephone facility, call every phone in the area in the city. So, if there's a hurricane out. Well, no, usually it's by jurisdiction, so in this case, it's Elizabeth only, but it could be by city or by county, whatever. So, if there's a major power outage, say, they would use that toward citizens.
That's only landlines, does that include cellphones?
I believe that's only landlines.
Those landlines?
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Moore Chevrolet, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, for the purchase of one 2014 Chevrolet 12-passenger van at a cost of $23,946.26 for the fire department. This vehicle will replace a 1989 Matthews bus.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that transfers for the 2014 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2014 Appropriations Act requires that your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider to amend segments of Chapter 13, Point 16, Point 120, 13.16, Point 130, 13.16, Point 14, 13.16, Point 150, 13.16, Point 160, 13.16, Point 170 of code of the City of Elizabeth to implement a new sewer utility tariff design to set new sewer rates effective August 1, 2014, and to augment the language thereof to comply with the recent lawsuit settlement.
Tony, have you got anything on this? Have you anything want to share on this?
No, we've covered it in detail. Basically, basically, the bottom line is there'll be no rate increase for the residential customers.
This is just going to affect the commercial?
That'll be the commercial and industrial customers that, through the law settlement and prior history, their rates will be increasing. And that'll be hopefully around August 1st.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider the Elizabeth Avenue Special Improvement District 2015 fiscal budget for introduction and approval.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization to prequalify Louis C. May, CPA and Associate, Pompton Plains, New Jersey, to provide auditing services.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization to prequalify Powell Capital Markets, Inc., Roseland, New Jersey, Acacia Financial Group, Inc., Marlton, New Jersey, NW Financial Group, LLC, Jersey City, New Jersey, Phoenix Advisors, Boardentown, New Jersey, to provide financial advisory services.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization to prequalify Decottis Fitzpatrick &amp; Cole, LLP, Teaneck, New Jersey, Parker McKay, PA, Mount Laurel, New Jersey, to provide bond attorney services.
Comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization to prequalify Blough &amp; Blough Attorneys, that law, Springfield, New Jersey, Florio &amp; Kenny, LLP, Hoboken, New Jersey, Palumbo &amp; Renard, Cranford, New Jersey, Decottis Fitzpatrick &amp; Cole, LLP, Teaneck, New Jersey, to provide property tax attorney services.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting authorization to prequalify Stack Coolahan &amp; Stack, LLC, Hoboken, New Jersey, Pat Joe, Kendall Park, New Jersey, Stanley J., Colonia, New Jersey, to provide appraisal services.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, advising that emergency medical services, open accounts, receivable balances deemed uncollectible must be canceled in accordance with the recommendation of our city auditor, Louis C. May, CPA and Associates. Cancellation does not preclude the acceptance of any future payments.
Any comments? That's sizable, huh? $10 million, still.
Yeah, it goes up after three years, and they're mostly poor and retired, people that just don't have the funds to pay stuff. We send out the billings and that's the minimum that we give back from.
Yeah.
Put on government and transfer.
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider the cancellation of sewer utility appropriations, state fiscal year 2014, joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, $1 million, capital improvement fund capital outlaid $1 million, with a transfer to sewer utility surplus.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, recommending that your honorable body consider approving the certification of the preliminary 2015 state fiscal year tax levy and order that tax bills for the second half of calendar year 2014 are issued in a timely manner in accordance with state statutes.
Any comments?
Yeah, tax rates for all these, and November will be approximately the same as they were for the previous quarter quarters. So, once we go into the budget process, the objective of the administration is to keep taxes in the realm of maybe under 1% to 2%, okay? And this year, there's no board of ed increase or huge county increase, so that's our objective. But the bills are going out in August, and November will reflect basically the same as the prior quarters. The next February and May bills will depend upon how the budget process goes and how much aid we get from the state and other considerations. And one thing we're just concerned about is the shortfall in the state treasury, $800 million, and now they're going to rectify that, whether they're going to tap into our state aid or not. But anyway, the timing, the rate that they're going at should be about the same.
Any comments?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We say about the same, but that mean no increase, same? Well, when there's rounding and everything like that, there might be a few bucks either way, lower or higher. So, it all depends on the way the county calculates it and so on, but basically, there's no, you know, no dramatic increase. And the objective for the final bills is going to be under 1% to 2%. So, we'll see how the expenses go through, how budget process goes through the next few months.
How soon will you know that?
Well, we're going to introduce the budget in September, and then the budget will be adopted hopefully in November, so we'll have a better idea of state aid and some of our appropriations for pensions next year, and hospitalization, of course, and that type of thing, so that'll be over in the next couple of months. But I don't anticipate any dramatic increase, and we have to stay within cap.
Will, will, the money that we, while we back up, how soon will we start to receive some of the money that we, that we, for the lawsuit we had? Will that start to roll in and play a part with, you know? You're doing for the, for the joint?
LARCO.
LARCO and all those.
No, that's, that's within the sewer utility, that's a separate fund.
Separate.
This rate is strictly for the municipal side, the regular tax. The sewer utility, as we just mentioned, we're coordinating that and getting the ordinance ready for August 1, the new rate schedule. But again, there won't be any increase for the residential customers. So, that's a separate utility on its own, self-lipidating, and that's the agreement we made, and that's the way we're budgeting that, so. There won't be any, you know, it depends what bucks, no residential increase, it'll roll up into, there's three classes, number one's going to be the residential, two will be commercial, and three will be the joint meeting permit holders.
Okay.
And the increase will basically go to the second class, because prior to the settlement date, didn't pay for any DOTs or TSSs, which the settlement calls for, so.
Tony, we've heard how the governor's not going to make any contributions toward the pension obligations, but have we heard, is there any talk about him cutting aid?
No, but I'm always concerned, because 2011, if you recall, they cut Elizabeth by $5 million bucks. We used to get $35 million in state aid, they dropped it down to $30 million, which was dramatic for us, and we had to overcome that with cost-cutting and, you know, other revenue streams and that type of thing, so I'm always concerned about that.
Yeah.
And their budgets coming up, and trying to find out what happens.
One, I think, I'm hoping that we can kind of keep a close watch on this, make sure that we can do everything we possibly can not to increase it, if we can. I know sometimes it's tough, you know what I mean? I know you got to see what the number look like, depending on what the state does and anyways.
Yeah, we have to recall from the city side, we've always been pretty conscious of new revenue streams, different taxes for the non-residents, hotels, motor vehicles, things associated with the airport, and, you know, and cost-cutting wherever we can, try to control on the appropriations and encumbrances. The last increases for the last few years have been mostly from the board of ed. This year, we had a dramatic seven-and-a-half increase that they gave, and the county the last couple of years have been pretty, pretty fair and good, so we only anticipate a small, maybe $20 increase this year. So, the county's been pretty good the last two or three years with the board of ed. Most of the increases over the years have been not at the city's desire, but from outside and sources, either the state with the grants or the reduction in state aid with board of ed increases. We've kept our expenses in a cap under 1% to 2%.
Inasmuch as, Tony, what you're saying, I know is true, there's no question, it's true, but the constituency doesn't see that. All they see is that taxes increasing.
Right, the rates go up.
And they lay the blame on us, you know what I mean? That's where it falls here, you know, you guys know that.
Yeah, well, a message that we've tried to get out in the last couple of years and before that was the mayor's letter, that goes out there and explains the major increases board of ed over the, you know, a couple of years, they went from $38 million to $52 million in the last, I think, five years, which is, you know, dramatic, and the reduction in state aid, so through the mayor's letter and just these council meetings, I think we just have to explain everything, why, why they're going up, and just get the message to the public, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Letter dated June 3, 2014, from the City Treasurer, requesting that your honorable body accept the bids received as a result of the June 2 public assignment sale on the properties located at 4557 South Front Street, bid amount $77,000, 2343 South Front Street, $133,000, and 5763 South Front Street, $40,000, totaling $250,000.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 23, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, recommending awarding a contract to Maria Torino, MD, Union, New Jersey, to provide sexually transmitted disease services for the period May 1, 2014, through April 30, 2015, at a rate of $100 per hour, not exceed $50,000 unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 23, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, recommending awarding a contract to Pedro Beckford, MD, Elizabeth, to provide pediatric physician services for the period May 1, 2014, through April 30, 2015, at a rate of $100 per hour, not to exceed $80,000 unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 30, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of the 2015 Urban Enterprise Zone Administrative Budget in the amount of $298,190.16 from Urban Enterprise Zone Assistance Funds, in addition to authorizing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with the Elizabeth Development Company for the administration of the Urban Enterprise Zone Program, as well as the Urban Enterprise Zone Second Generation Funds for fiscal year 2014, 2015, for the period July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 30, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to utilize Urban Enterprise Zone Assistance Funds for the Commercial District Security Program to provide for the continued funding for the walking police patrols in the various business districts throughout the city, in the amount of $260,249.60, with a 20% match from the city in the amount of $65,062.40, for the period July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015, for a total project cost of $325,312.
Any comments? Councilor Torres?
What is considered heat shift hours?
I'm understanding those are the busy hours of the day, the busiest hours of the day.
Would we know that? Is that it here?
Shouldn't be. Usually, they have four o'clock.
Yeah.
And, yeah, 4:06, 4:07, something like that.
Yeah, probably in the morning. Can that be, does that say in hymn tree, or can that be, can that be changed in certain wards? Do I see, like, you know, 30, Bayway, 4th Street? It's for the business districts.
All business.
Yeah, each business district might have a different situation, that's all.
Yeah, we could talk to, we could talk to UZ, you know, the end of the day. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure. Happy with what they have presently, would like to check it out.
Yeah, sure. I don't think they want this, anything.
Not for everyone, just for me and my district.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sorry, Tony.
Yeah, you can stop by and see. Yeah, you can stop by and see me, we'll talk to.
Any other comments?
Letter dated May 30, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to utilize Urban Enterprise Zone Assistance Funds to provide for pre-development funds, which will enable the Elizabeth Coalition to house the homeless, to expand their services to the homeless population in the city, for the period June 10, 2014 through June 30, 2016, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 30, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of Urban Enterprise Zone Second Generation Funds to be utilized to finance the continuation and administration of the Urban Enterprise Zone Financial Lending Program Phase 8, for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, in the amount of one million, four hundred fifty thousand, one hundred seven dollars, forty-one cents.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 2, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to enter into a community development block grant agreement with United Youth in New Jersey, Inc., Elizabeth, to help defray costs for participation in the Miss America Pageant in Atlantic City, for the period July 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014, in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 2, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a venue agreement with Wells Fargo Home Mortgage, a division of Wells Fargo Bank, allowing Wells Fargo Home Mortgage and Brand New Day, Inc., to host an event to be held on Saturday, June 28, 2014, in council chambers to assist troubled homeowners with Wells Fargo mortgages.
Any comments?
I just want to say this sounds to be like a good event that's going to take place. I know there are many homeowners throughout the city that are going through some difficult times, and hopefully this will be the type of event and forum where they can get some assistance or get some information to help pull them through whatever they may be going through. So, it's a very, very good thing.
Letter dated May 22, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept and sign all appropriate documents for the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation, granting Union County Program for two hundred trees to be placed throughout the city. The county will reimburse the municipality fifty percent of the total cost of the purchase for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Any comments?
They just, have they taken names for people that are interested in trees? Contact the Public Works Department like we usually do?
Yeah. I'll check with John, I'm sure that's.
Yeah.
Put it up.
Letter dated May 27, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A, attached Tier 2, for the boarding up of said properties in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars, thirty cents.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 30, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Richard Grubbin Associates, Cranberry, New Jersey, to provide Phase 2 Archaeological Services in connection with the Elizabeth River Trail Phase 2, and of course not to exceed fifty-four thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars plus reimbursables.
Any comments?
Letter dated June 4, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of change order number two for the contract awarded to Tomco Construction, Inc., for the Veterans' Memorial Waterfront Park Rehabilitation at an original cost of three million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars, to provide further for soil remediation action, capping and implementation consisting of excavation of the top ten to twelve inches of soil required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, at an additional cost of five hundred thousand dollars, which combined with the previous change order raises the contract to four million, forty-six thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars, twenty-nine cents.
Any comments?
Yeah, can you explain that to me, Tony?
The soil?
If I can, Tony.
Okay.
My understanding is that while they were working down there, they unexpectedly, when they were doing some excavating for a foundation of some sort for the FAG, discovered that there was some contamination. As a result of that, they were required to report it in accordance with law. They did that. They had some soil samples taken, and it turns out that there was contamination there, that one no one expected to be there. And as a result of that, all of that soil has to be removed, and the cost of that is five hundred thousand dollars in addition to the original contract price for the repairs at the marina after the storm. And it's my understanding that they're going to attempt to get this money returned to us through FEMA, and that's in the process of being negotiated right now.
Shouldn't they take, shouldn't they take, I guess what I'm trying to say is when they give us a contract and they say this is, this is what it's going to cost, shouldn't they take some type of ownership or?
No, not for unexpected, you know, not unanticipated problems. And that occurs quite frequently in construction projects, and it's not unusual. This was unanticipated because they had no idea that there was a contamination.
In unknown parts, it's usually spelled out in specs.
Right.
Yes. And this was an unforeseen event. But as Counselor reminders, it's hopefully going to be reimbursed by FEMA. So, Public Works is going to.
Well, we know that.
Well, it's in the process.
That's in the process. I don't have the timetable for that.
Okay.
No guarantee of that.
Counselor, too often when, and too often during construction project, you know, I've been through it when I was with the county, unforeseen project, problem such as that is not uncommon. So, you got to change or continue the job. So, you know, stop dead steel or the why you be sitting there all day long, you know what I mean? So, those unforeseen problems exist and all the time, and just got to move forward, you know?
Particularly down there, I would think, I mean, it was just this industrial area there that, you know, there may be other areas that may be.
Yeah.
They just happen to, you know, find that one.
Yep.
And once contamination comes in, it gets very expensive and like.
Yes.
The attorney said the Department of Environmental Protection has to get involved, and you have to follow very strict requirements in order to clean that up.
Absolutely.
And it's expensive.
Very expensive.
Thank you.
Unless you want to stop the project now.
Absolutely.
I didn't think you did.
Letter dated April 1, 2014, from the Director of Recreation, requesting authorization for his honored mayor to execute an agreement with the state and New Jersey Department of Education Sponsor Management Plan for the 2014 Summer Food Service Program, which will commence July 7, 2014 through August 29, 2014.
Any comments?
Letter dated April 1, 2014, from the Director of Recreation, recommending awarding a contract to the Elizabeth Board of Education for the purpose of providing food vendor services in conjunction with the Summer Food Nutrition Program, to commence July 7, 2014 through August 29, 2014, at no cost to the city.
Any comments?
Letter dated April 1, 2014, from the Director of Recreation, requesting authorization for his honored the mayor to execute an agreement with the state and New Jersey regarding funding for our Summer Food Nutrition Program commencing July 7, 2014 and ending on August 29, 2014, at no cost to the city.
Kids are going to eat well for the summer program.
Letter dated May 30, 2014, from the Police Director, requesting authorization for proper city officials to apply, accept and sign all appropriate documents for the United States Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, for the COPS Hiring Program Grant, to provide for fifteen new police officers to increase community police patrols throughout the city's six wards for an amount not to exceed six million dollars, with a twenty-five percent local cash match, in addition to a maximum federal contribution of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars per position over the three-year grant period.
I just want to say that I'm happy to see this. I certainly hope that this does get approved because, you know, we know that we have some officers that will be retiring, and we're definitely going to need to replace some of those officers at least. Any, any comments?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
I can co, yeah, thank you. I can co with you. I can't emphasize enough that you need to make sure that we stay on top of trying to hide more police officers in our city to keep it safe and for the welfare of the community. This is a win-win situation here for all of us. Too often, you know, as we have been campaigners, all of us, I'm quite sure you guys have experienced the same thing, that people have been implied that you need to, sometimes they say, you know, see, the police officer here, this area, that area. And I know we're doing the best we can, whatever we have, but the more police officers we hire, the better for our city. Naturally, crime or down, but we want to keep it that way.
Right.
Police officers are doing a fantastic job with what we have, but we don't want to step out of our hand and get out of control like other cities. I won't name those cities, but we want to try to keep that out of control like we have it now. So, that's what we pray that this causes to really decide how the police officers are as soon as possible. Thanks, Mr. President.
Any other comments?
Councilman Maza has requested to handicap parking spaces, 103 Murray Street, 308 Spencer Street. Letter dated May 28, 2014, from the City Treasurer, submitting to Treasurer's Report of Receipts and Disbursements for the month of January 2014, a statement of bank balances and investments as of January 30, 2014.
Any comments?
Letter dated May 28, from, from the Fair Rental Housing Board, providing their minutes of April 16, 2014.
Okay, we'll do the rounds. Councilman Torres? Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I have one, I just have a question. Since parking is an issue around the whole city, do we need to create an ordinance where we could actually have city yard, actually put lines in the street to create more parking? Because I know, just to bring more awareness to the residents, you know, sometimes there's a driveway, a parking spot, a driveway here and a driveway here, the guy parks like directly in the middle. Is there a way, a way where we could actually create an ordinance where we could on each individual streets and start creating lines where, you know, cars not parked in that area? We could take that one, just to create more parking spots because parking...
You're talking about if they park over a driveway or if you want a driveway?
No.
Or near, near driveway where you want to actually park out spaces?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, if you were to go to a restaurant, they have their lines marked up, and you're, you know, you park in your spot. So, same thing with the streets. What I'm finding out is you have a driveway, says to the guy, parking his car the way he's supposed to, he parks right in the middle, and he actually takes two parking spots. So, I know a lot of residents are approaching me, if we could create lines on the street, on the curve, so that we could actually create more parking spots.
I can look into that. I'm not really sure we need an ordinance to actually be done by the Public Works Department. There would have to be some sort of a, a study conducted by the police department as to the size that these parking spaces would have to be, and, you know, their locations. It's quite an undertaking because of the size of the city and, and the other, of course, I don't have to tell you, we have so many handicap parking spaces as well. And I'm sure you have them in your work too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, but we can look into it. I can talk to John Bopetti about it. And I can also, I may have to do a little research to see if you need an ordinance to do that. But you certainly do need a study of some sort to go out and take a look in, you know, in the streets, you know?
Like out front, we don't have lines, but we actually have a pole with two numbers. So, you know, two cars, no car is going to be parked directly in the middle of that pole. It's going to be on that side or that side.
No, I understand what you're saying. And then of course, you'd have to also mark out where the driveways are, that type of thing as well.
Maybe like main streets, you know, Main Avenue, just maybe we could bring money into the city and get more parking.
Well, they've done it in the main streets with the parking authority. At least they have them designated that way. And the residential communities, that's something I've inquired about before. And the problem is that's the standard size that you would need to make. And you'd have to make them all the same size. So, then the way you may lose some parking spaces also, because you have to make them all the same size.
If you have these compact vehicles, many vehicles.
So, if you create another board truck.
And then, you have a pickup truck or you have an SUV.
Yeah, so.
It wouldn't be an easy thing to accomplish. It's something we can sort of explore and talk to John about it.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Councilman Keating?
Pass.
Councilman Gollum?
Pass.
Councilman Questa?
Pass.
Okay, I don't have anything. Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Okay. Adjourn.